...work session and we'll do the roll call here.
Commissioner I, here. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Mengeberg, here. President Shaw.
Here.
And Mayor Holliday is absent this evening.
All right, so we, we're gonna look at future agenda items. Anybody have anything? Hearing none. Let's go to discussion items. We are going to change our agenda up here a little bit and we are gonna move the 3C into first place here because 3A are, Mr. Runyon that was going to be speaking to us, has got a ill family member and could not make it here this evening. And Brian from Metro is still here with us tonight, so we thought we'd move him up and let him meander home early tonight. So if that's okay with everybody, change the agenda? All right, so let's move to 3C, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Governance Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon. And Ms. Teraway.
Thank you very much. So as you know, for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project, we are, we have a partnership with the state, Metro, and Clackamas County. And we govern ourselves through an intergovernmental agreement. We currently have one and we're looking at, which expires at the end of the month, and we're looking at a new government agreement. We have Brian Moore here. He is the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Manager accountable to sort of all, all four of us entities to talk about that agreement with you. We do have it on the agenda for June 21st of this month. So this is just a little introduction and explanation of the IGA.
Great. Welcome back, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner President. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here and able to speak about the Partners Intergovernmental Agreement for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. As I had mentioned earlier, I'm the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Manager. And for those of you that may not be quite familiar with how that project is structured, my role really is to be the project manager for all four of the partners. So even though I, you know, my paychecks say Metro on them, I'm, you know, I'm responsible to Oregon City, Clackamas County, Metro, and the State of Oregon for this project. And so where we're at now is, is that we have moved, moved on to having the design set that you saw earlier this evening. On May 17th, that design went to the partners for review and recommendation to move forward on. And as a part of that recommendation, they also reviewed amendment and restatement to the existing IGA for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. So the, the quick rundown is that the, the current IGA expires at the end of this month, actually. And we're focusing on, the renewal on delivering the first phase of the project. The expectation is that the duration for this new IGA will extend through 2023. That should more than cover the amount of time that we expect necessary to get through the completion of Phase One of the project. So the, what, again, what we have in, in hand now is the conceptual, the conceptual design and the area of Phase One and the rough scope for what Phase One should consist of. So as we move forward, we'll be doing additional analysis for that area, both from a technical standpoint and from a design standpoint, to refine the concept down to something that can be put into construction drawings, approved through land use, and through all of the regulatory permit process through the state, as well as through Army Corps, through, through our federal permits, and then moving that forward to construction. So we're looking to start construction in summer of 2018. And we've got a window of about, just short of two years, it's really about 18 months to complete Phase One with the funding that we have in hand from the state. So with this IGA, one of the major changes is that the IGA acknowledges that Metro is taking the lead in project management for the construction portion of the project. And in order to efficiently manage that project, the decision-making authority around value engineering, constructability, and those sorts of things is placed in the hands of Metro because Metro is the fiscal agent for the $12.5 million from the state, as well as the $5 million from the NA bond that's moving, going towards this project. Oregon City has generously contributed about $1.2 million to the project as well. So for those portions of that money that will be funding the capital construction or the design, Metro also serves as the fiscal agent for those funds. One, one other item that is important to note for this IGA, the operations and maintenance obligations of the project upon completion, both for Phase One and ultimate completion. That is not clearly defined at this moment, but this agreement commits the partners to resolving the questions about how operations and maintenance will be handled prior to beginning construction. So that is the, you know, right at the top of the list for the tasks that the Technical Advisory Committee is working on right now. And we're looking to complete that work within the next three to five months. The, the last little, the last little bit that I wanted to mention regarding the IGA is when, when this agreement went to the partners for consideration, I was, I was pleased that it was approved unanimously by the partners present. And Mayor Dan Holliday actually made the motion to recommend this agreement for approval to all of the respective agencies. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm just gonna refresh. We've got Oregon City with 1.2 million and who's all the contributors again, just to refresh my memory again here, Brian?
Certainly. It's $12.5 million from the state, $5 million from Metro, roughly 1.2 from Oregon City, and about $200,000 from Clackamas County. In addition to that, the, our, the group called Rediscover the Falls, that's our Friends Group, has committed to raising actually $10 million, which exceeds what was originally budgeted at about 5.8, to bring us to that original budget of $25 million.
Okay.
And one thing that I would add is there is a budget attached to this and it's our tentative budget to 2019. And it does match our budget that we approved locally. So the funding from Oregon City identified in here matches with our budgets and the funding we have identified in our city budget.
Okay, good, thank you. All right, any questions for Mr. Moore here?
And actually, one more thing to jump in, sorry, is that, just to note that as the other attachments to this do include the full concept plan design as well as the Phase One design. So they're an attachment to this IGA.
Is there a red line version that talks, that shows how this agreement is different than the previous agreement or, because I'm looking at the one that's here and the only thing that's highlighted is the date and I'm assuming there's been a lot of dusting off done.
That's correct. We, I can provide that to you if you'd like to see the, the red line changes. There's some significant revisions to how the organization of the staffing of the partners was set. There was working groups that were established early on in the project that are no longer necessary in order to facilitate forward movement on the project. And so we, we took out a lot of the language related to that. So the red lines are gonna look very significant, but they're technical in scope.
So the red lines will, will include the new language and the old language still exists in the red line, but it struck through for purposes of reference?
Correct.
I would like to see that also.
That's probably good if you could send it.
Oh, yeah, I'll make sure it's made available to the, to the entire commission.
Both the struck-through language and the new language.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll send a clean, a red line version and a clean version.
Perfect.
And to, to that point, there's, in the version that you have now, there are two highlights regarding dates for the IGA between the state and Metro regarding the state funding. Since sending that document out in your packets, we've finalized the revised date for the $5 million in lottery bond funding. And that was pushed out to 2020. And we have in hand now the, the draft IGA that addresses the $7.5 million. And the spending deadline for that is also 2020.
Speaking of dates, you, I think I misunderstood you or misheard you. Did you say that Phase One was going to be completed in, what, I thought it was 2022?
Correct. We're looking to complete Phase One by 2022.
That's what I thought. I thought you said something within 18 months.
Yeah, so the 18 months is, addresses the schedule that we have. So we're looking to begin construction summer of 2018. And then we'll have to complete the spending of the state money within 18 months.
Oh, okay.
And the reason for the 2022 date is to provide room within our, our project schedule for RTF to bring their fundraising dollars to the project and to have the existing organ, the bureaucratic infrastructure still in place when they bring that money to the project. So rather than having to spin up a new agreement and do all of that legwork when they get that money in place, we're, we're still in position, ready to go.
So this is an agreement with the four partners. What, what if any formal arrangements are there with the Friends of the Falls that are being actively fundraising?
Yeah, that's a, that's an excellent question. So we have a current agreement that is a three-way agreement right now between Oregon City, Metro, and the, the Friends Group. That agreement is going to be revised to reflect the new budget commitments that have been made to the Friends Group for the next two-year period. And that three-way agreement will be revised to a four-way agreement that will, that will include Clackamas County. And as I understand, the, the Friends Group has submitted their first grant application for a $5 million grant that, that they've been working towards. And, and it's, it's a significant hurdle and it's a great success that they've gotten that far. In, you know, for those of you that didn't know, the Friends Group just got their 501(c)(3) in December of last year. And so within six months, they're already in position to submit an, a grant application for, you know, a very significant amount of money. And so how far they've come in a very short time is, is very significant. And it's a testament to the, to the folks that are serving on that board and really doing a lot of legwork to, to make sure that the, that the group is successful.
Okay. Everybody okay here? Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Moore. We are now gonna move to 3B, and that's the City's Public Works Operations Center Progress Update Goal Two. Mr. John Lewis.
Thank you, Commissioners, for some time tonight on your agenda. So tonight, we're not really asking you for any decisions. We're just giving you an update on the Public Works Operations Center. Martin's gonna do that. Martin's been managing the project, really kind of getting it through the land use approval process and dealing with several things that have come up over the last few weeks as well. Just want to remind you that there's, this project is on one of the many goals that you have in your list of goals and things you'd like to see accomplished. And the specific goals were update the Public Works Operations Center master plan at its current location and then proceed with construction of the Public Works Operations Center at the current location. So we've been pursuing that with passion and trying to get there. Tonight, we're trying to avoid the public comment that we've been seeing in the newspapers to the degree we can. But I wanted to mention that this project has been on the books since I was hired. So it's going on 13, 14 years now that we've been trying to get a Public Works Operations Center to come to fruition. And, you know, we've taken a lot of public comment from the community on that. We've had a variety of open houses and meeting upon meetings. We've got one adopted master plan. We're trying to improve that master plan based on some of that feedback that we've heard from the community. And we are really interested in delivering a project that this community as a whole. This facility needs to serve all of the city. And we think it's cited in the right location. We think it's fiscally responsible for the whole community. And so we're pretty passionate about that. And we just, we just want to share that. We think we can be, continue to be an excellent neighbor on property that we've been on for many, many years. So with that, I'll go much deeper, other than to introduce Martin, who's our Public Works Operations Manager. Most of you or all of you know Martin. And so with that, Martin, take it away.
Okay. You really build it up there. Come on in here. All right, so I'm gonna give you guys an update on where we stand with the Public Works Operations Center. For the record, Martin Montalvo, I'm the Operations Manager for Public Works. One of the things I'm gonna emphasize as we go through this, because I'm not sure if all of you have seen some of the recent updates, is, is changes that we've made in the design, both from the approved master plan, which was approved in 2009, to the changes that we've made as we've rehashed this design, both 18 months ago and then working with our steering group, of which, you know, a couple of members of the planning commissioner are, are part of that steering group, several members in the McLaughlin neighborhood are members of that steering group, and from public comment that we've heard. So this is the approved master plan that you'll see up here on the slide for you. You can see that it's much more intensive in terms of both overall land use. The square footages were significantly different. This 2009 use versus our 2017 use is a 25% reduction in overall square footage for the site. This is achieved by revisioning what portions of Public Works need to be present at the facility. So it's primarily Operations Group, engineering still being in touch with City Hall and the Planning Group. They're gonna be at this facility. And then at the time of the 2009 master plan, code enforcement was also part of Public Works, and now they're going into the new police facility. The other major changes is there is a significant three, four-story building, I can't recall, I think it's a four-story building, that was originally envisioned on Center Street in the 2009 plan. One of the major impacts that we heard from that plan was the concern of redirecting traffic and having significant traffic load of large vehicles in the upper yard. So we said, let's retain the large vehicles in the lower yard where they currently are housed. So that maintains status quo. Other major changes is the preservation of the rock outcropping. So there was a concern about taking that amenity away and the impacts to the white oak population that's there. So that area is not being impacted by the current iteration of the project. That's actually marked for doing some minor environmental work out there and then leaving it in as an as-is condition. So how do we propose to accomplish this in terms of constructability? So what we're in right now for submittal is for Phase One of the project, which is essentially everything that we refer to as the upper yard. So recall for the buildings that are at the upper yard facility, with the exception of the armory, to be removed. Some of them would be salvaged architecturally if possible, but essentially they would all be removed in one way or another. The buildings that are called for in the plan would then be constructed temporarily. Most of the activities that we currently do in the upper yard, as far as storage and some of our equipment, if we, once we acquire the armory, all of those assets can be stored inside of the armory and it won't be an impact for us. And we can also shift some of those assets to some of our smaller ancillary facilities on a temporary basis. Phase Two, once the Phase One is constructed and available, we'll shift administrative functions to the upper yard. And then Phase Two will be constructed. And that's primarily everything that you see on the Center Street frontage. Phase Three, with the master plan, what we wanted to do is make plans that extend well beyond my career and John's career, so that there's some, some sort of vision for whoever follows, follows us years from now, has an idea of what we didn't plan. And there's a 10,000-foot expansion that's planned on here that is included within this master plan submittal. Right now, it's, it's a box, but it's something we want to account for and make considerations for with the engineering and design. So this is the current footprint. Couple changes that we've made in regards to some of the community questions, and we'll go into more detail, is setting back the frontage for the administrative building a little further back from the bluff than was originally envisioned. Other considerations you'll see is some changes to the lower yard, which again, the lower yard is all part of the Phase Two submittal, so it's not something you'll be seeing in the near future, but we wanted to include it with, with this presentation to update you. We also made some minor changes in terms of some of the parking that you see in both the upper and the lower yard and the position of the elevator. This is basically a landscaping plan. Most of the trees that you see noted on here were originally inventoried in the 2009 iteration of this plan. Right now, we're calling for minimal removal of any of the trees. The trees that are there will be reevaluated by an arborist when we go to construction. We've been doing pretty intensive work the last two summers in ivy removal and trying to protect the trees that are there. We've actually had to have two of the larger trees removed, not for any other reason that they lost their health status. And we had an arborist come out, prepare a report, and we made a decision that the safest thing for us and for anybody visiting the area is to have those, those trees removed. But for the long term, we're committed to trying to preserve as many of these trees as possible. One thing I do want to mention, all of these trees are within the upper yard footprint. So they're on the armory property, they are on our upper yard property, they are not in Waterboard Park. So we are not proposing to remove any trees within Waterboard Park. So I know that that's been a question or contention that's come up from a couple of the internet posts that have brought to my attention. So we're not proposing removing any of the trees within Waterboard Park. So this is one of the small changes that we've made in, in an attempt to try and work with some of the adjoining property owners. So several of the questions that were brought to us was that the lower yard seemed too imposing. There were a few too many bays that would be coming out into the traffic, or into Center Street, and that several of the bays in the far right, if there was a truck pulling out of there, they'd be basically shining the lights into somebody's front bedroom window. So we took that into consideration. There's a little misalignment with that, but we still said, hey, is it absolute, is it absolutely necessary for us to retain these bays? Well, it would have helped us, it was a decision that we made that we could lose two of the bays and basically shift some of the larger bays further towards the left on the diagram that you see. So in the far right-hand corner, you see what we've done is bumped the, the shoulder back to kind of soften that edge a little bit, add a little bit more green space in there, and included some tree plantings at that location. There's a house that's almost directly opposite of those locations. So by doing that, we, we meet the request from the adjacent properties of trying to soften that up and keep a, a car from potentially coming out in the dark and shining a light in their window. All of the other bays front up on Public Works property, so it shouldn't be an issue with that. One of the big things that we've done here is, again, shifted the elevator over more. That gives us a little bit easier access into the facility itself. And then another thing that was brought to us was some sort of definition of an arch or a more defined entryway into the lower yard. So we have a rendering that you'll see here in a few minutes that kind of exemplifies what we're thinking with that. And then also what we're working on towards trying to meet the public art component for our project. So one of the questions that came to us, again, on the left-hand side, you see we've softened that shoulder up, we've added some landscaping in there, removed two of the bays that previously been there. We've created a nice entryway with a rock iron fence that during the days, just like we do with our current fence, we leave it open. We can get in and out of there, anybody that needs to come and make deliveries can come in there and make those deliveries. During the evenings, those gates will be closed and provide security for the facility. There's a nice little archway banner that goes across the top of that that denotes this as this is the Oregon City Public Works facility, kind of defines the, the street, the block that we have there. And then you'll see two inserts there on the far right-hand side that I'll go into a little bit more in terms of what we're thinking of for an art component. You can also see in this rendering in the backside is the anticipated view, if you're standing on Center Street, right there at one of our parking lots, what you would see of the administrative building in the upper yard. So there's concern about the massing of the facility and its imposition on the properties below this. This is pretty consistent with what you see when you're walking along the promenade, looking back towards our facilities in terms of other households on that hillside. So we're trying to keep that massing and that, that perspective kind of to that scale. So these are some representative examples of one of the things that we're thinking of. And to kind of give you the best two ideas of what we're looking at, we want something that pays homage to the work that we do, to the work that Public Works does in terms of maintaining infrastructure. And I really like the, the mural that you see on the bottom left-hand side in terms of what the content would be, but not necessarily how it would be represented on the facade of a building. We want something that shows, you know, men and women working on our infrastructure, doing the daily toil of keeping a city running. But then we want something that kind of has an etched stone feel to it that matches the rest of the color and the palette and the texture of the building, kind of like what you see in the bottom right-hand corner. So these are a couple of the examples. And then we're also thinking of maybe incorporating some sort of metal component into it. So those are the other textured metal pieces that you see in there. Right now, all we're trying to do is kind of paint a vision, but we don't have a definition as to what it will actually look like. We wanted to give you guys some examples, thinking, we are thinking ahead in terms of not just a facility, you know, that's square and blocky and serves a purpose. So again, back to the perspective, if you're standing over there at one of our parking lots looking up, this is what you would see in terms of what you see in the lower yard, the elevator that would be the connection between the upper and the lower yard, and then the administrative building as well as the other ancillary buildings looking up from the streetscape. So you can see it's not that imposing. It gives you a good set of buffering on the bluff side between the trees and the setback to kind of hide and shield that and then help it meet the vernacular, which is, I'm learning stuff from the architects every day, the vernacular of the neighborhood with the, the design for the building. So this is one of the smaller buildings that you saw on the upper yard design. This is the tool and equipment storage facility. So what we're envisioning with this is rather than occupying square footage, we're going to occupy cubic footage. So almost envision a vehicle being able to drive in through any of these three bays and pull out on the opposite side, load up whatever equipment that you need to, with racking systems similar to what you see in a Home Depot, that an employee can get what they need. It's, oh, it's on, you know, row two, bin four, and get what they need, load it up into the vehicle, drive out the other side and come around to go and do the work that they need to for the day. It's incredibly helpful for our guys because, as you know, it rains quite a bit here and it helps them be able to store and keep equipment out of the elements and put it in their vehicle in a safe and efficient manner. We have three primary divisions and it'd basically be, one of these bays be dedicated to each of them. And then one of the things I'm envisioning in the future is a dedicated staff person for maintaining and accounting for stock and being stationed in that facility. So this is a, a plan profile here, give you an idea what the overhead would be considering. And this is two-scale, so the vehicles are depicted there about the size of an F-250, so give you an idea. We could theoretically get two trucks in here bumper-to-bumper and be able to do what we need to, as well as store a small forklift for raising and storing equipment. So this is a plan of the armory facility. So the armory was a... So the armory was originally designed to service heavy military equipment. The bones of the building are good, healthy bones. She just needs a facelift. And a little bit of work on the environmental side from the state of Oregon, so that's one of the items that we're still resolving with them, that we hope to resolve by the end of the summer, and probably be bringing something to you guys in the early fall in terms of transferring ownership. Sir?
What is going on on the left-hand side? Have we got doors over there, Martin, or?
Yeah, so let's go over that. So one of the things, you've been to our building, and you've seen, we don't have a dedicated welding shop, we don't have a dedicated carpentry shop. We have a welding shop slash offices slash computer bays slash safety room.
With six-foot ceiling.
Yeah. So these are all, that entire section on the left-hand side are a series of rooms that are already there, that are already defined. There are some internal walls that would have to be rearranged. And then one of the things that we're looking at is bay doors that open up on that green space over on the south side of the building, which would be roll-up doors, but they wouldn't be vehicle roll-up doors, they'd be, so you could bring in some sheet metal, you could bring in a piece of equipment, you could bring in acetylene tanks or fuel tanks for welding purposes and bring them in and out of there, bring in the tools and equipment that need to be stored in each of those respective spaces. So the sign shop would be here, the welding shop would be here, there'd be another just ancillary workshop that would be located in these areas. Those would be communal spaces for all of the divisions to do whatever respective work that they have to do. The front left-hand corner is the offices for our vehicle, our fleet division, so they'd have dedicated offices and restrooms, obviously. And then the entire right-hand side is, one of the things I love about this building is storage, stock. Right now, everything that we need to service our fleet is you call, we haul, it's call our vendor and try and get in here in time. It really slows down some of our fleet servicing capability. We're very limited in terms of what we can stock in-house, so that gives us the opportunity to keep tires, equipments, filters, the general wear and tear items that we can save a lot of money by just changing this out on our own and getting it done quickly, have a place to actually put those and keep those and track those. That's a huge cost that we're doing as good a job as we can in terms of trying to capture, but we could be doing it better.
Martin, at the shop, it looks like there'll be a lot of activity, people coming and going. Would they be accessing that from Center Street or from, to the north or south, I guess it would be?
So let's go back to this one. So are you, when you say people are accessing, are you talking staff or citizens visiting the facility?
All the trucks that are being maintained and the people that are supplying materials.
So predominantly, we can accommodate the majority of our fleet with the heavy equipment being the focus on the lower yard. So the only things that we're really accounting for in the upper yard in terms of parking are a few pieces of equipment that are weather-dependent, that have to be stored. When we get below freezing, we want them in a climate-controlled facility. And then trucks that are of a half-ton or less. So the majority of our trucks are a half-ton or greater, so the 250s, the 350s, and then any of the custom trucks are all one-ton or greater. But the majority of those will be in the lower yard. This is accounting for visitor parking, for somebody coming to a meeting, a few staff parking for senior staff, and then some space for equipment that we're not going to leave in the lower yard, so trailered equipment, assets that we need to get cleaned off, there's a big wash rack area that we're planning for up in the upper yard. But as far as any of our people, the primary entry route, we're envisioning Center Street. John Adams is an ancillary, but it's not restricted. We still need to be able to access off of John Adams to get good flow-through there, and we're actually expecting our revised traffic study for you within the next few weeks. So it's actually due in about two weeks. We'll have a better number to give you. But really, a lot of the storage or a lot of the parking spaces that you see here, the entire left-hand side is all visitor parking. Everything you see towards the center is for equipment and some staff parking, and then everything that you see in the top middle on the upper yard is all equipment and senior staff parking for their rigs. So the supervisors need to get out, they get in their truck and go.
Can I interject here too a little bit? So right now, John Adams Street is a through street, so there's a lot of neighborhood cut through traffic. In 2010, when we adopted plan, the traffic report suggested it's really kind of a wash on whether or not, once we close that street, whether or not we would, the results were we wouldn't add traffic, trip traffic, but we would be putting more trucks on there. And at the time, it was large trucks, right? So that's the main reason for the de-emphasis on this. I'm reluctant to suggest that we would, the intent was to have more of a one-way traffic pattern through here, so trucks would come up and leave. I think we're trying to, we want to manage that site so that we do, that's part of the reason why we bought that piece of property down off of Center Street there, to soften that driveway a little bit, so that we would have a little better truck access there. So we do want to emphasize that, but in conversations with the neighborhood, I just want to be clear, and I think we have been, that John Adams Street needs, we need ingress and egress. We're going to de-emphasize that through our own management plan, just like the conditions that were approved in 2010 for our master plan, so that's, just want to be ultra-clear on that.
Also on here, since we're on this one, Martin, is that you have provided access and parking to Waterboard Park, which was one of the concerns also, so.
Yeah, and that was an original condition from the '09 plan, and it's something that we're still committing to. There's going to be some dedicated parking spaces there at the trailhead for the Waterboard Park Trail, which currently, people are using the armory parking area, so we'll dedicate some parking spaces at that facility for them.
We're also adding, one of the other requirements was from the Center Street side to add a pedestrian path that gets the connection to the park from that side, because folks won't be able to walk through our site to get to the John Adams Street side, so they'll have that through kind of walking option.
So since you're talking about the armory building, it sounds like the negotiations with the state are going in a positive direction?
Going in the direction we prefer. So they finished an environmental evaluation, it's public record and I think most people have heard by now. The facility's contaminated with a couple environmental contaminants. We expected this when we opened the negotiations with them, and the state's completed their evaluation and are currently working on an environmental restoration plan with their own internal staff. They have an environmental officer that works directly for the state that's a staff person who's supposed to be preparing a restoration plan for our review within the next few weeks. One of the things that they have to do is they have to complete the environmental restoration before they're able to offer the land to anyone. Now, when I, I should rephrase that. Technically, we own the land, they own the building, so under the original deed that was provided to them is that if it ever ceased being used for an armory, there was a sunset period where, or ceased being used by a military facility, there was a sunset period that if they didn't repurpose it for another military use, they're supposed to hand the building and everything over to the city. So we're working with them on that, because there's a lot of administrative roadblocks that they could throw up. We want to make this a smooth transition for them and for us. It's really, from the contact person that we've been speaking to, it's a surplus property for them right now.
So in the upper yard?
Yeah.
How many parking places are actually provided for future users of Waterboard, the adjoining Waterboard Park?
I believe it's five spaces.
That's what I saw.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it's five spaces.
Okay.
And then there's also, at the top of Waterboard Park is the overlook, and that has dedicated spaces, so you're providing access at both ends and you're providing parking at both ends. And just so, for the record, if you're trying to envision where the overlook is, because this question has come up, it's about an inch above Commissioner O'Donnell's head, so it's completely off the page, so just.
Well, I've walked it, and five parking places isn't really a lot, but you can decide that on your own.
There'll also be opportunities on Center Street when we have that connection as well, so again, if you're wanting to walk the trailhead, there'll be much more access than there is today.
So this is the rendering for the administrative building. So I'm not an architect, but I'm going to try and spout off what I have learned. So it's meeting the intent of the historic review guidelines for architecture within the McLaughlin district. So the guidelines basically say they're supposed to have certain characteristics, some of them being a cornice and a parapet, a base, middle, and a top, so defined sections in the vertical structure of the buildings. And then a large storefront with sort of glazing windows, which are all components that we've tried to incorporate within this design. The texture and the composition of what the buildings will look like in terms of material, I'll show you in a few minutes. This is the layout of the facility, so basically administrative functions on the lower floor, so anyone coming here for meetings, coming to meet with any of the administrative staff will be able to just access from the lower floor. Also, ready access for the break rooms and the restrooms and locker rooms for staff. And then one of the big things that I want to emphasize with this building is security. Our building is basically an open-access building that has limited opportunities for security. We've made some internal changes, and some of you that have been in the building have seen them, to try and help us with that, but we're making an emphasis within this design is making sure that we're accounting for the safety of our staff. It's becoming a bigger and bigger issue in today's world. This is the upper, second floor of the building, so what we've done is basically allocated pods for each of the divisions, so the supervisor, the lead person, both have a dedicated office so that they can mentor or discipline staff as needed, I guess, and then they can do that within privacy. The guys do not have dedicated workstations, so our rank-and-file staff, we've cannibalized little spaces throughout the building to provide them as much workspace as we can. Everything we do nowadays involves a computer, and we've got computers stashed in little hidey-holes all over the place, and this gives them dedicated workstations for each of the staff members to have, at a minimum, a kiosk with a computer that either they have for themselves or they're sharing with one other person, and then a common working area where we're planning out the day's work, there's a table that everybody can sit at and say, okay, this is what we're going to be doing, we're going to have our little staff meeting, and let's go forth and conquer. So there's one of these little pods for each of the divisions. There's also guest workspace, so that bottom row of common-size offices, those are dedicated for electrical shop, our SCADA system, and then just a couple dedicated guest working spaces, so as the department grows or City Hall gets crampier with space, with other departments needing space down here, we can start shifting some of the staff over to the operation centers needed. And then a large conference room in the second area, or the second floor, we don't have that now. Our break room is our conference room, so this morning, we had an all-hands meeting, and you're cutting into people's break times and cutting into, you know, when you can have it and not conflict with somebody's break or lunch or something else, so. And it facilitates training with a dedicated training space as well. It'll also serve as our primary EOC when we activate for weather or other emergency events.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So when I was working with Mr. Phil Lewis on his proposal, one of the concerns was always locker space for the staff and the access to a shower in the event they were exposed to any hazardous chemicals. Did I miss that on the floor plan?
Nope. It's the bottom, or it's actually the top right-hand corner. So currently, we've got high school-style lockers, that's about the best analogy I can give you. So, and there's nothing wrong with that, but, you know, if you've seen any of our guys, they're not high school kids. We're looking for a little bit more locker space dedicated for each of the individuals. I forget what the exact planning number is, but I want to say it was somewhere around, I'd be pulling a number out of my head, but we define a set square footage is going to be allocated for each of our staff people, that gives them space to store your personal belongings, store your lunch cooler, which right now are just kind of all over the place, store your coveralls, and then have two dedicated showers that you don't have to walk out into a common area to go and take a shower. You can take a shower within the confines of the men's locker room or the ladies' locker room. We do deal with materials that you get it on you, and the first thing you want to do is, I want to get back to the shop and I want to take a shower. That's not an uncommon occurrence, so it is something that we actively plan for with this plan. The other thing that we did is a mudroom, so an area that if you're coming in from the outside and you've got some stuff on you that you don't necessarily want to track into the building, give you an opportunity to take off your boots, hose down whatever you got on you, and then you can come inside and get cleaned up. Okay? And that's not just for the men in our office. So the ladies in our office currently share a single ladies' room, no dedicated shower for the ladies, it's all one common shower, and within that ladies' room, there's three lockers. The ladies and our staff will have a dedicated locker room with the same equivalent size of square footage allocated for them for their personal belongings. They'll have two restroom facilities and a single dedicated shower, which they currently don't have. Okay, so back to the pretty pictures. So this is a view, if you're standing at the edge of the bluff, okay, so you're at the upper yard, looking down at the lower yard with the elevator just to your left. This is what you would see with the admin building, so like I said, two-story building. One of the things I want to emphasize for you, and we're planning for this deliberately, is the second floor, you'll see in each of the top corners, there's an outdoor space, which right now, it's a patio, but it's a structurally-designed patio. We're doing it as a patio to break up that blockiness, so when you're down on Center Street, you don't see this square, big block that somebody dropped on top of the bluff. It gives it a little bit more of an appeal to the eye, but it's designed structurally so that when the day comes, when all of our predecessors say, we need more space, that it encloses the two walls, you've got a structural roof, and then you've got a structural base for those walls to build upon, and then you've got more office space that can be occupied. It'd be, you know, a little less appealing, but it gives you space that we've accounted for to try and account for the future growth of the department.
And where's your office at, Martin? Is it kind of located by that patio?
Nope. I have the worst view of the mall, and I did that deliberately, I stare at the parking lot, bottom left-hand corner. But the only thing I didn't put in front of it is the fueling station, which will not be on this facility. So I deliberately did that to myself.
All right.
That's way different, Martin's so much better than me. That 2010 plan had me on the top floor looking out over the view.
Well, your plan had a barbecue out there.
There's still a barbecue. We're still accounting for the Traeger.
Is that also the smokers' lounge, or what is it?
So this is, if you're in the upper yard, in the parking lot, staring at the front of the building. It shows you those architectural features, the long windows, the three distinct sections, the top, the middle, the bottom, that belly band that kind of moves through there. If you look at it, you know, it pays a lot of homage to the addition to the library. And I don't want to say we did that deliberately, but we know that people liked that design, and a lot of time was invested in that design, and we said, let's take what elements we can from that and learn from that. So this is what we're looking at in terms of material. So on the bottom right-hand side, you'll see what's called a groundface CMU, so this is engineered masonry blocks, the historic review board, so it says you can't use masonry blocks, but we interpret as they were looking at cinder blocks. We don't want a cinder block building. These have warm textured colors, there's stones that are mixed into the masonry, and then it's given a smooth ground face. The other thing that's beneficial with these, they're structural in nature, so they make the building more resilient itself, but they give it a good sturdy front facade that if, you know, moss starts growing, we hit it with the pressure washer, we're done. The other thing is, gives us the ability to put these in in a pattern that's consistent with what you're expecting with like a brick building, with, you know, we have a design that's in here, and I forget what the pattern is that they chose, but it's basically what you would do with bricks is stagger the implementation to give it a nice definitive look to it. The other thing for the upper sections is composite metal panels, so these examples show a little bit more shine than what we're envisioning. We've actually provided physical samples of what we're envisioning to the H- We've actually provided physical samples of what we're envisioning to the HRB to let them feel it, let them touch it, um, to see the actual elements. The aluminum sheeting that you see are the composite metal panels. We like what's on the right-hand side to give it sort of like the, the weave of the metal, but it's a little shinier than what we're looking at. We want a matte facility. What we don't want is for the sun to shine on it in the good sunny Oregon day, and then it's blasting out, reflecting on somebody else. And then what you see on the left-hand side is how all of these components would kind of mix in with one another.
So Martin, during one of the McLaughlin meetings, one of the individuals there, uh, he actually brought in a sample of what Heath was saying that a lot of the, uh, municipal buildings and historic neighbors are using. Because he thought evidently we were using CMU blocks for the outside of this. And I think he's brought this maybe to your attention or to John's attention to, do you recall that?
I don't actually know.
Yeah, he actually brought one of the pieces in, you know, and I'm, if there, I thought maybe this is what you were doing. I don't know where you got that from, but anyway, but it's good to know that we have this for reference for him.
Yeah, and we've, we've shared this, um, with the three HRB meetings, HRB meetings we've been to so far. And the materials are available. They're with Trevor over at the Planning Commission. Anybody that wants to review them or take a look at them. And we've got another set over at Operations that I'll make available to anyone that's interested in seeing or touching, feeling them. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
How many employees have we got now in Public Works?
In Public Works?
Fifty-one point one.
We budgeted, yeah, for fifty-two employees, but I think that includes seasonals. And so I think of full-time staff were about forty-five.
Good.
Is that your day shift staff? That's not all out at this facility. That includes the engineering group here.
So I have a question about the, um, lower yard on Center Street. Originally, there was a lot of interest in having the trucks pull into the bays and pull out. But now you have fewer bays and more art and more landscaping. So how does that work in terms of flow?
Okay, that's a good question. So the bay that I said that we sacrificed is the ones over here on the far right-hand side. What we're envisioning, we actually have turn patterns. What we did was give the turning template for the biggest and most cumbersome piece of equipment that we have to our civil engineer. And he says, if this can make the turns, then everything can make the turns. Okay? And what we figured out is that with this implementation, a vehicle can come in from Center Street, either along Center Street into the rear of the yard and then make the turns into the larger bay. So this will be where the VACON goes. It's our largest piece of equipment. They'll be able to come in this way. No rear turning movements, pull into the bay and park. Also coming in the other way, Center Street, same pattern, come in and park. No rear turning movements. That helps us with securing the site itself for safety. So the most prominent, um, vehicle-related incidences for industrial sites is rear turning patterns. That's why we've got those huge honking horns. Every time we put those in reverse, you hear us beeping everywhere we go. It was one of the concerns that was brought to us by the neighbors saying, oh, the beeping of the vehicles in the middle of the night. This plan will minimize that. It's not going to eliminate it. There are going to be instances because there'll be heavy equipment to store down here. Again, we don't want it in the upper yard, and some of those may need to back up and move as needed, but it'll minimize it. And then as far as pulling out, that's what the bay doors that are located on the frontage of Center Street allow us to accomplish is the larger pieces of equipment, the bay door rolls up, just like any prudent driver. Ease out, get your nose out, get a good view, make sure you're clear, and then you make your left or your right-hand turn. So some of the concerns that we've heard is, you know, it's a safety hazard. You're going to run some poor kid over that, you know, is walking in front of the garage. Anybody that's seen any of our vehicles knows we're not driving these, you know, chargers that the police department is driving. We drive big, heavy trucks. They do not get up and go. Predominantly, we're diesels. So they don't come charging out of there on an emergency, like, you know, we got to go save the world or something. I'm, you know, Public Works, we're big, fat and lazy, in terms of equipment, I'll say. And we like to roll it up, ease out, get a good view, make the turn out of there in a safe and efficient manner.
And is there a sidewalk immediately adjacent?
There is a sidewalk that is located here. So what we're proposing is what's called a rolling curb along the front of all of these parking areas. That is a variance that we'll have to get from Planning Commission in for yourselves, but that's what we're proposing for that. So there will be a dedicated sidewalk that basically fronts the entire facility and then gets you here to the staircase that we're envisioning to make the connection between Center Street and the upper yard and Waterboard Park. Okay?
I guess a comment and a question. I would comment that most actions would be involved with a backing operation as opposed to pulling out. That's why I've always been in favor of entry and exit roll-up doors. How many vehicles with a large turning radius that you just described can that design accommodate?
So right now, the three biggest vehicles we have are the two Vector trucks. We have a water truck, which we don't envision being stored at this facility long-term. But just when the weather turns, it'll probably be brought back down here. And then, so the two Vectors, the water truck, and what else?
Well, we've got sweeper and we've got them trucks.
The sweepers, that's.
They're not, they don't have nearly the wheelbase that the VACONS have. Question was just mainly about future growth. If you should need to acquire another, can you still accommodate that with this? Yeah, and I don't think it's, you know, the one nice thing about our lower yard is that because it's not expansive, our employees are, you know, there's always a spotter for those bigger vehicles. So if they do have to make that three-point turn, they can do that.
So the other thing you see here to kind of accommodate if, if we do need to grow or if the guys, um, need to put something in the bays temporarily, these are designated for storage of trailers, um, as well as any other heavy pieces of equipment that we can't fit into a bay. We'll pull right in and we'll store it there as needed, and we'll make adjustments as we move through time. But for my career and probably definitely John's career, um, this should suit the needs of, uh, of the department for quite a while.
I noticed that on the front page, I think it was, so Martin, that it said twenty years. Is that accurate or?
Yeah, that was our planning basis was a twenty-year, um, model now. With Phase Three, that, that lot that we're kind of accounting for, and that's why people look and go, there's a lot of parking up here. Because if I put something in there at Phase Three, someone's going to say, well, now you got to tear that down for this Phase Three that somebody may have to build twenty-five years from now. So the safest thing is just put some parking spaces there now. So between Phase Three and the modifications that we've accounted for on the main administrative building, we think we can get well past twenty years.
Good.
Yep.
Yeah, that was one of the big initiatives. I don't know if you're, Commissioner Smith was pretty adamant about, you know, planning for the future. That's why the building build-outs that Martin talked about and that third phase, there's just, there's room for, for, for growth. Obviously, that's, that's limited, but, um, just thinking about staffing and how we staff compared to other cities, we are a pretty lean organization, so we're going to, we don't see that changing.
There's a blue, um, new cistern and is there like a waterfall that's going into this?
There's currently a waterfall there. Yeah, so we've got a, um, there's a, it's basically the stormwater system, daylights, um, just above our upper yard. And then we've got a little waterfall that comes back in there. And one of the things that we, that's been in the plans that I've always seen is the implementation of a cistern. I'm trying to capture some of that water and use it for some sort of reuse.
So on any given shift, how many people are, are present at that facility?
Thirty-two. So we don't run twenty-four seven technically, but we have coverage twenty-four seven. So there's an on-call person and all the supervisors and managers are on-call twenty-four seven.
It looks like there's, I don't know, sixty, eighty parking places in the upper yard?
So again, a lot of that is for some of the equipment that we're going to be storing up there that's not heavy equipment. A few of the trucks that are a one ton or less. And then you'll see a good fifteen of those spaces or more are Phase Three. But I want to put something there. Leaving it as a green open space is just inviting problems further down the road.
Are those parking spaces covered?
Several of them are covered in the upper yard, but not all of them. So that long rectangular building that you see there, those are all covered. Now, whether they're covered and weather or climate controlled, a few of them are climate controlled, but not all of them.
I was just thinking for the long-term wear and tear on your equipment.
Oh, as many of the guys that can get their truck undercover, they'll be ecstatic. But we're limiting it. We're trying to be frugal. A couple of the things that this plan helps us with is, um, so energy efficiency, we want to implement some solar capability. We are not planning to pursue LEED certification, but we have committed to, um, trying to meet the goals that are outlined within the LEED certification process. So what that means is we're not going to spend the twenty thousand dollars to get the plaque to put on the wall, but we're still going to go forward with trying to, um, implement a lot of the requirements that are incorporated with LEED.
It's the same way the library went, did too, so.
The big, fat and lazy plaque.
We can put it right there next to your fast-driving car plaque. Yeah.
Yeah, Martin, I, I don't know where you were going with that. We're going to regret that in life for a long time.
Just remember, you can give me tickets, I can close the road in front of your building.
I'm just going to publicly thank you for saying that.
You're welcome.
Beat that horse.
Oh, man.
All right.
All right.
Any other comments? Not from the peanut gallery.
Well, I'll make a comment. It's usually unlike me, but I want to be a good neighbor to those who wanted and continue to use the Waterboard Park. And I really feel five parking spaces is insufficient, and I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Appreciate the comment. Um, this is still, you know, in the lay-in use process.
I mean, I know what you said, John, but I don't want people to have to traverse from the lower area all the way up there. That's my only comment. It's, it's a small one. I think it's a commendable job and it's tried to take into account all user groups. And in fact, we spent quite a bit of money in mending the plans to meet those, those inputs, so we'll see what the future holds. So, um, so, yeah, we'll take note of that, see if there's some options there. Martin, can you highlight on the screen? And you'll have to turn around to see it because you won't see it on your screen. But that pathway that I'm talking about is, is kind of an experience if just, when we designed it. No, I'm talking the pathway on the Center Street side.
Oh, right here.
So that is a, kind of a natural area as well. So, um, thinking about Waterboard Park and the experience, just coming up through, there's a, there's an oak grove through there with what we kind of consider a little bit of a water quality facility. So we're going to, we're, we're planning a meandering pathway so that the water, the, the experience that you're talking about in Waterboard Park really starts at Center Street and would meander up and through and cross and then move its way up and reconnect up into the existing roadway that's kind of out in that area there. So just, just so you know that that's, we, we intend to make that, um, somewhat of an interpretive, you know, dealing with the, that's the one place where people will, there's not those white oaks in Waterboard Park, but there are white oaks in that area, and so the idea would be signage and kind of some interpretive signage there that would help.
So if you're walking on Waterboard, um, road trail, it basically fronts right along the property line, right along here, and then where it starts making the turn right uphill is right there. So this connection between here and here is not, not insurmountable. So right here, it starts to make the turn back around and the head continuing back up the hill that way.
So that connection you point to, what's the change in elevation over that short distance? Any idea?
Uh, I don't have that on the top of my head. I would, I, I'd be pulling a number. I can check it though.
No, it's, I just think of those five parking spaces as almost trailhead access. You're saying the other isn't a question, is how, how accessible, you know?
Well, it is trailhead access and that, that's the, that's the dedicated trailhead. It's just right now, when someone's using it, they're using on-street parking or they're using private parking. So if you take away the private parking, there's nothing there in terms of a parking amenity. The other thing is, um, there is dedicated parking at the top of the, um, of the trail, at, up at the overlook. So both of those do provide in total, you would get about five spaces up top, and Phil, you'd be the expert on how many are up there, but you'd say five is about right? Yeah, and then you'll have five spaces down here. Either of those will give you trail accessibility. But you'll have dedicated parking here, whereas right now, you can park out there, it's a big lot, but you're squatting on private property. So.
I know.
Yeah.
I've squatted.
I've done it myself. I don't do that. So. There's any other questions? All right, the big, fat, lazy, Public Works guy will leave. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Martin. Good luck getting home tonight.
Yeah. Don't, if it's a little white Camaro and your Challenger, your, your mirror.
We had a staff meeting today and we told everybody, watch out for the white Charger.
Yeah.
So Commissioner O'Donnell, Center Street's at about elevation two hundred. That's the road in Waterboard Parks, roughly two fifty, so about a fifty-foot elevation change. And the question is rise over run. How, how quick does that occur?
But you get to meander.
I'm just trying to be a good neighbor. Oh, you're right. It'd be stair, this is, we expect part of that to be stairway.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, good.
People have to rappel.
All right, um, let's see. Any other questions about? All right. Let's, uh, then we have a city manager's report.
I don't have any updates, uh, tonight for.
All right.
Commission.
We're going to move to adjournment then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.